Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, July 29, 2025, special public hearing on the proposed school building closure of the Fulton Building. This is a hearing that's required under Section 780 of the Pittsburgh, of the Public School Code of 1949, and it was advertised as required on July 3, 2025, in the Post Gazette. Comments for this hearing should be limited to the proposed closing of the Fulton Building. As we do at every meeting, I want to clarify how public, this public hearing will work. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. We will start with those that are here in person and then follow by those that are testifying virtually. All speakers are only allowed to speak during their designated time, and you are not allowed to share your time with any other speakers. As your time begins to run down, for those in person, the red light will start to blink on the microphone to give you a signal. When you're online, we will give you a raised hand signal to let you know that your time is running out. Any registered speaker that misses their time, we will come back to you at the end to give you another opportunity, just in case you were just a little bit late. Our stakeholders can read, follow along on the website. There is a link on the district's homepage with a link to the hearing. And as always, this meeting, the video and any written testimony, read or unread, will be posted to the website tomorrow. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Gandy to call our first testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And our first speaker this evening is Rachel James.
Hi there. My name is Rachel, longtime listener, first time speaking. I'm a parent of two PPS kids. We actually haven't been in the district for many years, despite living in the city for over a decade. I bought into the rhetoric of kids with special needs or quirky kids need a small private classroom in order to learn or be themselves. We had a couple of successful years, but in May of '22, my son was assaulted at his school by a staff member. We assumed the school would do the right thing, and they did not. I was left in the summer frantic, wondering where my kids could go. Lo and behold, one of my close friends was the PTA president at Fulton Elementary, and she immediately put me in contact with the principal, Mr. Little Hale. This was absolutely life-changing for my son. With absolutely no trust in authority whatsoever and little chance of feeling safe at school, the teachers and admin built relationships with my son that fostered trust, safety, and respect. We don't hear these stories often, those that leave private for public, but I guarantee you, I am not alone in this venture. My son thrived at Fulton for his two years there, fourth and fifth grade. The staff immediately worked towards an IEP, as he is one of the 26% of Fulton kids with a disability. He wears hearing aids. The school is precious. It is small. It is valuable. The art and PE teacher, after only maybe a handful of classes with Milo, went to his first roller derby game ever in fourth grade. It is, Fulton has reduced the achievement gap between white kids and kids of color. And if your plan is to address equity, why would we close a school that has already actively worked towards that goal and succeeded? My other child made it to Schiller for seventh and eighth grade, another school that has actively worked towards closing that achievement gap. She's headed to Dice now, but I don't actually know where she's supposed to go now. My son will be going to Schiller now as well, from Fulton, from one closure to another. I think it's important to note that both of these schools have some of the most stable and long-tenured principals and teachers, which is uncommon in this district, but highly desired. So I don't know why you would want to disrupt this. I have listened to so many parents make incredibly important points and ask a lot of insightful questions. I'm not as eloquent as they are, but I will say this, what I have noticed for a year now is a charade of listening sessions where you have not actually listened at all. You don't answer questions and you just plow forward. I am asking that you reflect on how best to make a decision with the most information possible. Jean, you are my neighbor. You know the North Side has been cast aside as less than other parts of the city, so I don't think that closures in the North Side will help us. Do you actually believe one middle school for the entire North Side will work? I don't. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Shannon Striner.
Good evening. I came here tonight prepared to talk about Fulton, about its brilliant inclusive educators, the joy my daughter Sienna experiences walking into that building each day, and the dream it has made real for our family after three failed school placements, one of them being another PPS school. But first, I need to address the process, or rather, the lack of one. From the moment Board President Jean Walker began driving this plan nearly 18 months ago, it's felt like the end was already decided. Besides hiring a consultant, there's been no meaningful progress, no community collaboration, no action from this board until now with these rushed hearings in the middle of summer. I listened to many of you board members express concerns during June's legislative session about the community's deep mistrust, about how last summer's hearings were rushed and poorly received, about the need for transparency, and a thoughtful transition plan. Mr. Walker pretended to honor those concerns. He nodded along. He spoke of being deliberate and careful, and then he turned around and scheduled these hearings without collaborating with a single one of you. So I have to ask you, did he hear you? Because he sure didn't listen, and just like the community, he's tuning you out to. This community has shown up with bold, thoughtful ideas. Every hearing I attend, I'm in awe of the passion from parents, teachers, and neighbors. Yet those ideas feel dismissed. The only logical conclusion is that Mr. Walker has his own agenda, and it's not about collaboration or equity. It's about creating a system where charters move in and public schools are left behind. It's short-sighted, and it's dangerous, because once you close a public school, you don't get it back. You hand its future to private operators who aren't held to the same academic standards, don't serve students with disabilities equitably, and aren't governed by publicly-elected boards. And when they fail, families like mine are left with no recourse. Fulton's academic growth proves what's possible when we invest in inclusion instead of outsourcing it. Fulton isn't failing. It's succeeding in all the ways that matter, not just test scores, but relationships, stability, and a track record of supporting students other schools too often leave behind. I believe in fighting for students by fighting for fully-funded, inclusive, transparent, community-rooted public schools, not by handing their futures to private entities with no long-term stakes in our neighborhoods. When Pennsylvania reforms charter funding, it will be too late to unbreak what you're about to do to this district. To the rest of the board, you don't have to follow him off this cliff. He didn't listen to you. Why would you trust him now? I sure don't. Please vote no on this plan and start over with us.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Haley Striner.
Good evening. My name is Haley Striner. Tonight, I'm here to advocate for my little sister, Sienna. Sienna has Down Syndrome, and I've been with my family through our whole education journey for her. It was hard to find a school that would include her while giving her the right education and support that she needs. When Sienna started kindergarten, it sure was a journey. Through managing half-days at her old school and partially being home-schooled, it sure was a lot on us, especially for Sienna and my mom. But there it was, right in front of our eyes, Fulton, our neighborhood school. Sienna started full-time there in first grade, and you could tell that it was the perfect school for her. She was getting the support that she needed, the education that would help her the most, and the friends and teachers that would include her, and overall, a great experience. I saw a major difference in Sienna. She was talking more, not only through learning more words, but by socializing with friends and teachers that would help her and include her. She started writing her letters and began sounding out words. She was reading. The progress that she's made is just incredible, and that couldn't have been done without Fulton. Sienna has made amazing relationships and learning achievements at Fulton. I can't even put into words how amazing it is to watch her learn and grow with her school and her friends. I'm so proud of all her accomplishments. Please keep Fulton open, because Sienna is not the only child that it's helped. I know that all of her friends, all her neighbors, and fellow students are so grateful for such a school to exist. She's in a wonderful environment, and I don't know what we would do without it. So I just want to thank everyone who's helped my sister, her friends, her amazing teachers, her PCA, Ms. Courtney, and everyone at Fulton. It's been an amazing journey, and I hope it never ends. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley, for your testimony. Our next speaker is Rebecca McLean.
Good evening. I'm here once again to raise my voice in support of the special community that is Pittsburgh Fulton. In the years that my kids were students there, we celebrated successes, worked through difficulties, and grieved the loss of special community members. We may have grumbled about the size of the gym, or that it would be nice to have a bigger outdoor play space, but those weren't deal-breakers. We recognize the historic building, and the surrounding neighborhood brought value to our school community. Fulton already embodies the things the district says it wants for all students. It does not make sense to unnecessarily disrupt a learning community that works. As recently as March, Fulton was getting accolades in local media for boosting reading proficiency scores by 20%. Fulton's school population is 73% African-American, and it's called an educational success story that continues to trend upward. Why do you want to disrupt Black students' academic success? I want to thank the Fulton supporters here today, Highland Park Community Council for their letter of support and help in getting the word out about this meeting, State Senator Lindsey Williams for her advocacy of public schools in our neighborhood and across the state, Mayor Ed Ganey for being a longtime Fulton supporter and advocate, and City Council people Deb Gross and Kahari Mosley, whose council districts cover Fulton's catchment area, and who recognize the value in communicating effectively to their constituents about issues that impact their lives. Thank you all for being good neighbors to Fulton and students in Pittsburgh Public Schools. PPS's take on community engagement and communication feels very different from theirs. Here's just one example of why so many people think you have hidden agendas or don't truly have students, families, and community members in mind. When you want to, you can meet people where they are and effectively communicate. I've received six talking points messages and images about community kickbacks and community conversations this month, rolling out positive messaging about the facilities' utilization plan. Pictures and graphics about these events are plastered all over social media, and they're held in the community, at schools, and in parks. In contrast, I've received one talking points message about the school closure hearings, a PDF attachment with no explanation. The hearings, if they're mentioned at all in social media, are listed in tiny font at the bottom of plan update flyers. I left work early to come to Oakland during rush hour to be here in person, when you could have scheduled hearings in the buildings impacted by this plan. The difference between what you want to do and what you're legally obligated to do is stark. Devin, thank you for genuinely fighting for all PPS students. To the rest of PPS, I wish I could say thank you for being good neighbors, but I can't. I think that you think you are, but that's not enough for Fulton. I want Fulton to stay open, and I hope that it does, but I also want the board and the administration to remember who they work for, the taxpayers of the city, and the children who need stability as part of a positive learning community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Allison Delnor.
Hi, everybody. I'm Allison Delnor. I do not have a prepared script. I ran here for work. But I am both a parent of Fulton graduates, two of them. They wanted to be here to speak, but they are currently on the road driving to pick up their grandmother, who has Alzheimer's, and bring her here. They're these great kids, and they're great kids because of Fulton. I also want to say that I am not against everything that's in the plan. I actually like a lot of the stuff. I mean, I am an educator who works in international studies. I work in language education. I think making that more broadly available and not keeping magnets as the way that people have access to foreign language education and international studies is a good model. But I also am a member of the neighborhood around Fulton. Our house is the house that it, is the house we chose because Fulton was there. It was the school we were targeting. It is right across the street. We listen to the kids play in the days while I'm working from home. It's part of the neighborhood fabric. And what really concerns me is the decisions that are being made that are not thinking about the long-term future. I know that you are thinking of that. I work at a big, complex organization, and there's a lot of pressures that are external. I know that you're playing multi-dimensional chess, but you can make decisions not factoring in the longer-term objectives of preserving neighborhood schools. Fulton can be a great neighborhood school because it already is. It has teachers that have been there for a very long time. My kids walk home from Obama and stop in to see their teachers that they had in elementary school. They are able to do that because of the long-term commitment of the educators there, and that's why we stayed, that's why we came to Pittsburgh Public Schools. It's why I constantly advocate to my friends that they should stay in Pittsburgh Public Schools and not send their kids to a charter school or a private school. And that's the messaging we need to do. We need to work on changing the culture, changing all the negative, the negative disinformation that is out there about public schools. That's the root of the problem, and that's where we need to find solutions. And the short-term problems we have now are only going to close schools, so we don't have them as resources if we are able to turn it around eventually. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Abe Danauer. And we'll move on to our next speaker, Michelle Boyle. And we'll move on to our next speaker, Lori Collin. Again, Lori Collin. We'll move on to our next speaker, Dominic Falingri.
Dominic Falingeri. All good.
Falingeri.
Yep. So, hi, councilmembers. My name is Dominic, and I stand before you today not only as a concerned member of the district, but a pediatrician deeply committed to the well-being of our children. I urge you to reconsider this proposed closure of Fulton, and my concern regarding its closure compelled me to come in and speak today. Recent research that I read, specifically the Fall '19 Issue Brief, "Should Failing Schools Be Closed?", what does the research say by Marcus Winters of the Department of Ed, highlights the profound and often detrimental impact of any school closure when it concerns our most vulnerable population, our students. While financial considerations are obviously pressing, the decision to shutter a neighborhood school reverberates far beyond the budget sheet. Closing the school would be unequivocally divesting in this district's youth and leaving them behind. The positive effect of attending a different school is often counterbalanced by the negative effect of the transition itself, as many students would find the transition difficult. Given the publicly-known demographics of the students who attend the school, it's appalling that this town is considering divesting in their future instead of investing in and supporting these young people. The families who attend the school, particularly those who live in this district, are owed a comprehensive explanation for why the school is being closed, as well as a clear roadmap for how any funds that would be gained from its closure would be reinvested back into the district. Schools carry with them more than just a brick-and-mortar building for education. By closing the school, we're directly taking away access to after-school programs and extracurricular activities that would foster growth, exploration of hobbies, and development of life skills. The research that I read strongly notes that displacing students into even similarly-performing schools would carry negative outcomes, such as decreases in their performance and behavioral health. While there is limited research to how this could affect students with IEPs and 504 plans, there is a large percentage of students who attend Fulton on these educational programs, and they would have, in my opinion, increased adverse reactions to the school's closure, as many people who before me have spoken. I think the city council should take pause and make sure that the closure of Fulton is necessary in this district's future, and if so, a well-thought-out plan would be firmly in place with engagement from community leaders and families to ensure that these displaced students are given equal or more opportunities to where they're brought to afterwards. Lastly, Fulton itself occupies a vital footprint in the heart of our community in Highland. If not already on your mind, it would be important for the city to consider what this building would become after shuttering its doors. It would be atrocious if this building and the land of it would be given to developments for restaurants and apartments instead of a home for children to learn and play. Thanks for letting me speak. Bye.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Emily Kane.
Hi. I don't think I have to keep holding down the button tonight, I hope. I messed that up last time I was here. My name's Emily Kane. I am a licensed teacher in the state of Pennsylvania. I am a licensed psychotherapist in the state of Pennsylvania, and I'm currently working in private practice, but I've also done a lot of other work in my career, including as an operations executive. So I do understand what it means to make difficult, complex choices where you have to take into consideration fine-grained detail. My youngest child is currently a student at PPS Fulton, and part of what I want you to know about me is that he won't be directly affected by the decision you are about to make about this building. And I'm not here because my child will be directly affected. I am here because I have seen what PPS Fulton was capable of when other buildings in our district just couldn't. Buildings that, in the upcoming plan, you've decided to promote, move, and keep. Buildings that you've heard over and over again about the toxic leadership within. I have watched for years as members of this board change, but persistently fail to take seriously the communication of parents and community members. And, and all the same, our own staff, people in our buildings. I'll also mention, I'm currently PPS staff. I'm in your subpool. It's like community service I do now, because we don't have enough of us. And I love public school. What I want you to understand about me and people like me who keep showing up to these meetings is that my, I understand, we all know, change is inevitable. The district does need to make changes. But when people come to my practice saying that they need to make change, and I work with people who are in critically dangerous situations sometimes, the stakes are high in my work now, too. When people come to me saying they make change, they need to make change in their lives, I don't start by erasing the slate. We look for what's working, and we increase gradually, slowly, planfully, over time. And I do that because I'm trained in empirically validated treatments that do work to promote change. Organizations aren't so different. So what I want to ask of you tonight is to keep the-
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Cheyenne Campbell. Cheyenne Campbell. And we'll move to our next speaker, Ian Lane.
Hello. I'm not Ian Lane, I'm Ian Kane. I swear it's not an alias. I am Emily's partner. I'd like to thank the board, and based on my understanding, primarily the board president, for hosting this meeting at the convenient time of 5:00 PM on a weekday, during the summer, and at this location in Oakland, which is notoriously known for its ease of travel during rush hour. For anyone reading a transcript, please note that this sentiment was delivered with dry sarcasm. I'm the parent of two rising eighth graders, as well as a rising fifth grader who attends Pittsburgh Fulton. Our two older kids spent their entire elementary experience at Pittsburgh Montessori, and our youngest was there as well through third grade. I have the unique perspective of having willingly moved our youngest out of the jewel of Pittsburgh Montessori after third grade and into Fulton. I hate to compare two schools. Individual teachers are working feverishly in both buildings. So are the extraordinary support staff. My experience with administration, however, is not balanced. The culture of administration matters and has direct consequences on the operations of the building and on how both children and adults show up and learn. My perception, which of course is only my opinion, is that the reputation of Pittsburgh Montessori has been chiefly built on the incredible energy and work of its parent community. It is in spite of the Montessori administration that the school retains its esteem. The parent community, for years, has labored to patch the holes left unattended by administration. I believe that light has started to shine on this reality over the last few years, including, but not limited to, administration's treatment of teacher Stephanie Lepine. We moved our youngest to Fulton because we felt hopeful the environment would support him in ways not available at Montessori. That he was supported in these ways is the reason why I'm speaking tonight. Experiencing Fulton has been a breath of fresh air. It's been like witnessing a maintained clock, with each piece oiled and interacting in ways that lead to a greater purpose. I'm sure there are those closer to the details of daily operation who would give me the side-eye at this analogy, but I believe that even the side-eye would be given in an air of openness and connection. I see parents, administration, teachers, and staff working together. I see cooperation. I see health. That we are at the point where Fulton is mere steps away from being closed feels catastrophic. It hurts my heart. What I've experienced at Fulton is diversity, care, compassion, academic integrity, growth through challenge. I've listened to the picture painted by the board over what the future could be, as if this future is a far-off reality. I think the microcosm of Pittsburgh Fulton is already a path towards this future. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Anne Kassler.
Good evening. My name is Annie, and I am a mother of a former student of Fulton. My daughter attended Fulton while we lived in Lawrenceville, and we are so grateful she had the opportunity to do so through the magnet program. Pittsburgh Public Schools' motto, "Students First, Always and Always," could not be better embodied than at Fulton. The dedication of its teachers and staff is extraordinary. Their commitment to nurturing each child's potential reaches far beyond academics and helped lay a foundation in my daughter that will last a lifetime. She has always loved school and excelled academically, and I believe Fulton played a pivotal role in fostering that success. The way the curriculum was taught not only equipped her with knowledge, but also instilled confidence that continues to carry her forward. When we moved to her new district, she qualified for the gifted program, a testament to the strong start she received at Fulton. Her love for art also blossomed there. This shirt actually was art she created at Fulton. It was a Mother's Day gift, and I treasure it dearly. Her art teacher recognized her passion early and encouraged her every step of the way. That support still resonates. She continues to create art every single day, in large part because of the encouragement she received at Fulton. Fulton will always hold a special place in our hearts. Whenever friends or acquaintances ask about schools in Pittsburgh, it is always the first recommendation we give. While I understand that changes are necessary for the district, I urge you to prioritize preserving the strong community and exceptional quality of education that Fulton has built over the years. These are not just features of a school, they are the foundation of countless students' success and futures. These strengths cannot easily be replaced within the district. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. And now we'll move over to our virtual speakers. And our next speaker is Meredith Knight.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your time. The closing of any public school building, for any reason, is a serious matter that should be approached with great care and thoughtfulness, because it's not just a building you are closing, but a community you are dismantling. The students, teachers, parents, and community deserve that respect. And this is especially true for Fulton. And this is especially true for Fulton, a school that is a shining example of equity, inclusion, and academic achievement. I would hope that, at a minimum, this shining example of a school would be respected enough to hold true dialogues with the school community, to ensure that has worked so well is preserved, and that the whole community feels that it has a true home in its new school. So far, all we have seen by way of a plan is the names of schools to be closed and feeder patterns. Perhaps in addition, we have also heard some platitudes about how it will increase equity, will be more evenly distributed, will more evenly distribute enrichments across schools, and will make our district future-ready. But how? We have heard nothing. I implore you all to vote no until district leadership provides this critical detail. What I cannot understand is why, instead of gaining trust from the community by sharing a thoughtfully constructed plan and engaging in thoughtful dialogue, instead we are rushing through this process and showing near contempt for any parent who deigns to question what's happening and why. You are doing the district a major disservice if you don't just pause and gain this trust and engage in real dialogue. I please vote no until you're prepared to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Marissa F.
Yes, hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Marissa. I am a Pittsburgh Fulton parent. I say that by caption about the students, the children. All summer, this has been a big standing and talk. And the kids are very worried and concerned because they don't know which direction to go. And they are so strongly about Fulton and how each teacher knows them and how they're going back and how they grasp it. My son has amazing with his math, and I know that that is from the teachers that he has. And I struggled with math, it was not my best. But when he comes home with any work he has, he knows that he can go in and get the help that he needs. And there is support, growing support. You could ask Paul, the whole Fulton is a standing community. And that so is another thing about the Magnet, too. There are certain reasons why we need to keep the Magnet. We do, because everyone knows their children, every child is different. And not every neighborhood school that's in their district is for them. And we should have the say of where our kids go. It should not be about that either. It's about the neighborhood schools and keeping the Magnet for different things. He knew French. I never taught that in school. And I really believe that that's because of the Magnet. It shouldn't matter where you're at or where you're going. And I feel strongly about Magnet in Fulton. And I really wish that we could rethink it and go slowly with the process and not all at once, because the children are scared and worried and they don't know what's happening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Laura Mullen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
My name is Laura Mullen, and I'm here tonight to ask the board to keep Pittsburgh Fulton open. At this moment, there are awful decisions being made on a federal level that aim to disenfranchise those who lack power. We read the news and feel powerless to effect change and protect those in our communities who are impacted by cruel political decisions being made far away. It's difficult to bear. It's almost more painful, however, to see a similar callousness within our own community. We voted for you. We elected you to serve our children, to prioritize academic success and physical safety, to open doors to opportunity, and I believe you want to do those things for our kids. But the way that this has unfolded has undermined your credibility. The fact that this hearing is being held in Oakland on July 29th at 5:00 PM in the dead of summer, when parents are away or disconnected, is a perfect embodiment of the way this process has disenfranchised parents. You have succeeded in making all of us feel that our voices don't matter. And that's a true tragedy, because we parents love this community and we dedicate our time and our energy to helping our schools reach their potential. I'm the president of the PTA at Fulton, and I watch parents show up in whatever way they can with time and money and ideas on a daily basis. And it is reckless of you to treat parents as irrelevant. There are school boards across the country that have been hijacked by the right wing, that have been able to ban books and change curriculums, and that hijacking has been made possible by the fact that public school parents are extremely busy. It is hard to show up, often impossible, and it isn't a reflection of how much public school parents care. It's just the reality we're working with. We need representatives who we can trust to act in our children's best interests rather than take advantage of the fact that it's hard for parents to show up to evening meetings far from their homes. And right now, five of you are doing just that. Five of you are taking advantage of the fact that it's hard for parents to show up by jamming this unpopular, ill-conceived, reckless plan through during summer months. You've put forward a plan to decimate the status quo without an accompanying plan to achieve a new state of affairs. You have said this change is needed for financial reasons, but you have not provided a single estimate of the savings. You've said this change is needed to promote equity, but have not conducted an equity study or even hired a demographer. Anyone with a cursory understanding of the neighborhoods in Pittsburgh can see that the feeder patterns currently contemplated, along with the elimination of the Magnet program, will increase segregation and resource disparities. I support change. I want better for all kids. But you have lost my trust by rushing to destroy without planning to rebuild. The price for your recklessness is going to be paid by my children, and that is not acceptable. Slow down. Do better. Earn our trust.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Valerie Webb-Armid.
I have two big concerns for the school community at Fulton if you vote to close this school. For the first point, if you do decide to close this amazing school, there should be consideration around what happens with the staff and students. Fulton has an amazing team of tight-knit collaborative staff that has a proven record of providing high-quality education to their students. Since this is one of those examples where the entire school would be absorbed into another school, the most responsible option for the transition of these staff and students would be to move them all as a unit at a minimum. Now for the second point. The most recent presentation stated that Dilworth, where the Fulton kids would go, along with Liberty, Lincoln, and Sunnyside would feed into Arsenal. However, you never provided any data around the new capacity calculations or what class size expectations should be, so I had to do it myself with the numbers that you shared in February. Now, Lincoln numbers were left out then, so I used the most recent enrollment numbers, which is about 425 students. If you take the enrollment numbers for Dilworth, Liberty, and Sunnyside from the February presentation, you have 1,071 students projected. Adding the 425 students from Lincoln's enrollment, that brings us to 1,496 projected students moving into Arsenal. But according to your own numbers, Arsenal's capacity is only 1,115 students. This means that these kids would feed into a middle school at 134% capacity. When they move on to high school, Obama's capacity is only 1,496 students, so they would be at 102% capacity. Now, this doesn't, this also eliminates the space for any students that want to return to PPS or for Magnet students that are supposed to be getting into that international baccalaureate program, but it also ignores the teachers' union recommendation of a maximum of 70% capacity. So riddle me this. Where are you going to put all these extra spaces for our middle and high school students for the programming that you plan to move in if they can't move classroom to classroom? How many Magnet seats are actually going to be available with both ID programs already over 100% capacity? And how is this going to impact our students that need more attention? Like the 26% of students with IEP is currently at Fulton. So what can we do now? In this plan, several schools at elementary, middle, and high school levels are over a feasible capacity. We're going to go with the teachers' union at 70%. So keep Fulton open. You can make it into another school to help reduce the capacity numbers to a feasible and realistic number. Since it was built for our youngest learners, it makes the most financial sense to relieve some of the overcapacity at elementary schools like Sunnyside, but you can also keep it as a middle school. Beyond that, this clearly lacks the forethought on the capacity impact of these specific closures, leading both in the short and long term. It probably would have made more sense to have a demographer help with these calculations before choosing specific schools to close, but you chose not to, so now what? You should probably vote no on closing specific schools, but especially-
Thank you. And our next speaker is Kathleen Ackland.
Evening, I am Kathleen Ackland. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of Fulton School and the Highland Park community it serves. A school is more than just a building housing students, teachers, administrators, and books. It is a community, a society, a friend. Like all communities, some are stronger, more resilient, welcoming, and inclusive, and kinder. Fulton is one such community. In addition, Fulton School, unlike other schools in the Pittsburgh Public School District, is the beneficiary of its location in Highland Park, home of the oldest community organization in Pittsburgh, the Highland Park Community Council, a strong supporter of Fulton School and through that school of the whole Pittsburgh Public School District. The business community in and around Bryant Street also supports Fulton School. I grew up in Highland Park with fond memories that include Fulton. I attended kindergarten there decades ago and can still recount stories of that time involving the kindness and enthusiasm of its teachers. Although my parents sent me to parochial school for the remainder of my education, my neighborhood friends went to Fulton School and entertained me with stories of their day that included camaraderie, friendships, and learning fun. As a result of my youthful experiences at and with Fulton School, its students and staff, when I returned to Pittsburgh after serving in government, I immediately signed on to be a PPS substitute teacher. My favorite school as a substitute is far and away Fulton School. I have substituted at Montessori, Sunnyside, Liberty, Obama, Wolslayer, Arsenal, Kappa, and Dilworth. Although these are fine schools, there is nothing to compare with the overwhelming sense of purpose coupled with warmth, love, and kindness from the students and staff that I experience at Fulton. I feel part of a community there from the moment I check in at the office. My whole day goes better, even after I leave school and fondly recall the experiences of the day. I truly believe that if Fulton School is closed, the Pittsburgh Public School District will be diminished by far more than just the loss of a building. Pittsburgh Public Schools will lose a huge piece of its heart. Please find a way to keep the vibrant learning community that is Fulton School open, not only for the students of today, but for posterity. By closing Fulton School, I fear that the Pittsburgh Public School District will lose not only the outstanding transformative school, but the support of the Highland Park community it serves as well. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening, James Rooney. We will move on to our next speaker, Margaret Overbaugh.
Sorry about that. My name is Margaret Overbafeld, and I am a proud Fulton parent. I'm also an educator with over 20 years of experience in New York City and Pittsburgh Public Schools, teaching, coaching, and working on school improvement and literacy and for students learning English as a new language. I've worked with many schools in many contexts, and I know firsthand the challenges public education faces today. I agree with the district that our current system reinforces deep inequities, particularly around Magnet schools and the Gifted Center. As a family, we chose to send our children to Fulton, our neighborhood school, because we believe in living our values of equity, inclusion, and the power of public education. And that meant not participating in systems that continue to fuel inequity. Since starting at Fulton in the fall of 2021, our kids have thrived in a supportive, inclusive community with dedicated teachers, meaningful traditions, and extraordinary growth in learning. But Fulton's building, according to the district's own records, hasn't seen significant capital investments since 1929. Now, the district's answer to nearly a century of neglect is to simply close it. While I don't dispute the need for change, I see no evidence that this plan will deliver greater equity, inclusion, or sustained investment in the schools that remain open. Where are the details on the demographics of reassigned schools, costs for renovations, and a plan to ensure resources are distributed equitably rather than continuing to flow to wealthier, whiter neighborhoods? As they say, "An education green follows white." So where's the blueprint for how merged school communities will be built with shared voices from staff, students, and families shaping everything from uniform policies to cherished traditions? Because what's being proposed isn't just closing a building, it's dismantling a thriving school community. And as a parent, that breaks my heart. As an educator, it makes me furious. No schools, including Fulton, should be slated for closure until the district can prove that these changes made in the name of equity will truly create it.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jason Striner.
Hi, my name is Jason Striner, and I'm here to provide my testimony on behalf of Sienna Striner and my family, writing, talking to express my strong report for keeping Fulton open. School is not just a building, it's a vital part of the community, a hub of learning and a second home for countless students, families, and educators. Fulton provides an inclusive, supportive environment that fosters the academic achievement, emotional development, and a sense of belonging, especially for my daughter Sienna, who went through countless schools before finding her home here at Fulton. Dedicated staff and committed families and engaged students have created a culture that cannot be replicated. Closing this school would disrupt the educational well-being of these children and families, tear apart the relationship between students and trusted teachers, and remove a trusted resource from the neighborhood. We urge the decision-makers not to consider just budgetary factors. And on that note, I want to talk about the factors that were used in making some of the decisions. I work for a construction company, and looking at the master plan and assessments report, I strongly disagree with all of the numbers that were come up with and used. The assessment costs were completed by PPS community and not construction companies, which it should have been. The cost to complete upgrades of over $4 million were HVAC costs. You know, weren't questioned of how those would be considered and how they were being put together. Assessments for other areas of painting and flooring were highly exaggerated, in my opinion, based on what I read. These complete scopes of work need to be evaluated before putting these numbers to paper. I strongly disagree with all of the ways and all of the numbers that I have seen in all of these reports. And I feel like a construction company with a background needs to put numbers like this together instead of just an assessment based on what I'm not sure. There are so many questions that would have to be answered before saying that these are correct assessment numbers. You know, please reconsider looking at all of these and all of the data that has been used to make these decisions before closing a school that means so much to the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Sean Mahan.
My family moved to Pittsburgh instead of Philadelphia in 2017 because it was a city with broad participation in the public school system, where our kids could get a great public education. The Magnet system spared us the pressure of choosing the right neighborhood and reassured us that we could always change schools, whether to pursue an opportunity or leave a bad fit. We sent our eldest child to Dilworth in part because our neighbors' delightful teenagers had gone there. My son had the same principal and many of the same teachers, and our family joined the same strong parent community our neighbors had described. Stepping into that kind of a community is a tremendous privilege because of all the little things already in place, relationships, organizations, practices, and culture, none of which are easy to build from scratch. My son graduated from Dilworth in 2024, having had a wonderful experience thanks to a fantastic having had a wonderful experience thanks to a fantastic faculty and staff, and thanks to a parent community that was both caring and effective. But my daughter, a rising second grader, will not have that same experience. Next year, instead of having a homeroom teacher who held her as an infant during Dilworth's famous morning meetings, she will move to a new school to be taught by a newly shuffled collection of faculty. My spouse and I will join other parents all staring at a pile of puzzle pieces that have just been dumped out. Whoever takes my daughter's spot at Dilworth will likewise find a school effectively starting from scratch. There is an undercurrent of pessimism in the district's current flip-the-table-and-start-over plan, but I've been very happy with Pittsburgh Public Schools. Most PPS families I know feel the same way, whether about the marquee magnet high schools or quieter success stories like Fulton. Yet now, when I talk to other parents, the conversations are filled with concern and frustration. Some families are already moving their children to private charter or parochial schools. Others are making plans to do so. I worry that enrollment will drop and we'll be closing the schools again in five years. While I offer my respect and gratitude to the district administration, what has made my children's education successful is the communities of faculty and families at their schools. These communities helped convince my family to move here and won the district the chance to educate other children whose families could afford a private school or a suburban home instead. Losing those school communities means losing that hard-earned, good reputation. I am skeptical that the sweeping changes of the current plan will give my daughter access to the same music education at her new school that my son had at Dilworth, but I'm certain that it will disrupt and dismantle strong, successful school communities. So I am asking the district to stop and draft a new plan that would earn the trust necessary for deeper, even painful, changes through incremental, achievable, and recognizable improvements, a plan that would evolve our district for the future without dismantling the successes we enjoy today, like Dilworth and Fulton. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jill Weiss.
Hello, my name is Jill Weiss. I am both a neighbor of Fulton Elementary School and a parent of a successful PPS alum who attended three Pittsburgh Public Schools, all that have since been closed. Fortunately, she only had to live through the closure of one school, Shenley High School. At the time we were choosing a school for our daughter to attend, we did not choose Fulton for her elementary school because it was not part of the IB feeder program, and Fulton did not offer what we were looking for. Today, it would be different. It has been exciting to see how Fulton has grown to be a school where parents in the neighborhood and beyond are eager to send their children. Fulton's current student population is roughly 50/50 in terms of residents. Half are neighborhood kids and half are moving through a magnet pathway. I've been told that the latter kids' students include children of former Fulton students who no longer live in the neighborhood, but still want their kids to experience the school they loved. I am concerned about what will happen to the students who are experiencing a successful school environment, both academically and socially, as is found at Fulton. Will their neighbors willingly move them? Will their families willingly move them to a reassigned, untested environment? Or will they move to an already successful charter or private school? Will the district lose even more students while losing the faith of the families who have been part of this building of an already successful school? Having watched the closures of the extremely successful Shenley High School result in so many students from the neighborhood being sent to a newly formed school with an inadequate building and unsuccessful educational and social environment, I have little trust in how the district is once again rushing into such closures. It has taken many years for those schools to recover, and some of those schools are set to be refigured again. The announcement that the closure of Shenley was based on a falsity was even more distressing. They recommended testing for asbestos that was never done, was only performed when the district wanted to sell the building, and that was found to be at a level proved to be safe. Why am I dragging all this old news back into the current situation with Fulton Elementary School? I'm concerned that the students and the parents are once again being subjected to the "sky is falling" frame of mind of PPS and the PPS Board, and that more transparency and more study needs to be done just to justify such large and abrupt moves for the sake of the students, who are doing a wonderful job of learning, the teachers doing a wonderful job of teaching, and the parents who are supportive of this wonderful school. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our last speaker will be Kathleen Schumacher.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, sorry about that. Hi, my name is Kathy Schumacher, and I'm a lifelong Pittsburgh city resident. I attended Fulton School from kindergarten through eighth grade, as did my siblings. I have been a PPS student, parent, community member, and employee. I have taught in PPS for over 23 years, much of that time at Fulton. Fulton is not just a school, it's a family and a home for our students. Students who receive an excellent education provided by caring, competent, experienced teachers and staff, who have led Fulton to become a star school. When children move on to middle and high school, they do not forget their Fulton roots. They return for programs, springlings, and performances. We have generations of family who attended Fulton and are warmly greeted by them when we see them out in the community. Last year, we sadly lost our beloved social worker, as well as a former teacher. There were many families and students who reached out, shared heartwarming memories, attended memorials, and continued to be part of the Fulton family. It has been said that Fulton is old and hasn't had any renovations. This is proven to be false, and many improvements and upgrades have been presented to this committee. You have heard from families, students, community members, and staff regularly throughout this process, but it doesn't seem to register. PPS will without doubt lose enrollment in high numbers due to these suggested closings. This isn't about a building. It's about a community and our students. PPS's motto is "Students First, Always and Always." But this is not that. The positives that Fulton brings are immeasurable. These hearings take place, we speak, and you listen. But are you really listening? I hope so, because so much depends on just that. We have heard so many people here present excellent ideas for why these schools should not be closed, why this whole thing should not go forward. And I really hope and pray that you take this into consideration before just up and closing these, because I really think it's going to affect the district in a very, very negative way. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And now we want to ensure that everyone has a chance to speak, so I'm going to go back through the list and call the names of the people who were not here when I called their names. And the first name I will call is Michelle Boyle.
Good evening. First of all, ditto. Secondly, in 2012, this is our third or fourth time, as somebody had said. In 2012, school closures were going to save our schools and was going to make sure that there was enough money in our schools. Obviously, that is not the case. The homework was not shown then, and it's not being shown now. In 2014, I stood looking at Fulton in December with ice running through my veins as I heard about the shooting at Sandy Hook and the fact that my children were at the school across the street. I felt safe with them there. And when I spoke with their teachers afterwards, they were in a panic. All they could think of at the time was, what could I do to save my students? What can I do to make sure that they're safe? These are the quality teachers and staff that you have at Fulton School. They care about our children. In 2020, I watched as the school went online and those teachers did the same thing. They twisted this way and that. They didn't say, "Oh, we don't know how to do this. We don't know how we're going to make this happen." They knew that children mattered, that their students mattered, and they showed up and they did what was necessary, just as I did at the hospital as a nurse. So these are people that I know that I can count on, not people who stand behind desks and stare at computers. I am a proud parent of a salutatorian and a valedictorian of Pittsburgh Public Schools who went to Fulton Schools. They have a vast experience, and the closing of a language school is insane. If my children, in speaking about all the work that has gone in regards to this plan, if my children turned in the kind of work that this board did or the person who came up with this plan did, they would have certainly gotten enough, and they would have certainly deserved it. Thank God they had good enough teachers that they ended up being a salutatorian and a valedictorian. That's the kind of people that the Fulton School produced. And I'm very proud of them. Keep Fulton open. Value children. Do better. Every day in the news, we are seeing how children and families and their second homes are not being valued.
Thank you for your testimony. And I will continue going through the speakers who I have called and not spoken. Abe DeNora, Lori Colen, Cheyenne Campbell, and James Rooney. We thank all speakers for their testimonies tonight, and I will now turn this back into the hands of Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Gandy. And as always, thank you for everyone who took time to come out and testify, whether in person or virtually. We appreciate your engagement in this process and look forward to continue working with you as we work to make a school district that works for all of our kids. And with that, we will adjourn. We will be back in 54 minutes at 7:00 PM for the scheduled hearing on Spring Hill School Building. Thank you all very much.